Welcome to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board Number Four Meeting for March. Time now is six thirty P M. So we're gonna get right into it with the city and state monthly reports. First off, the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have someone from the Honolulu Fire Department on? Okay, so we'll defer that for now. We'll go on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. This is Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven. The following is the monthly statistics for the month of February two thousand and twenty-four. Motor vehicle thefts fourteen, burglary nine, theft twenty-four. Car break-ins were ten, total calls for service were six thousand one hundred and thirty-four. And for a monthly safety tip, we have home safety tips. And I'd like to provide some of the following tips for our home security. Please always lock your doors when you leave the home and secure the house, exterior doors, windows, etc. Make your home look occupied if you can by leaving the lights on and TV. If you have a garage door, please secure that as well. And if you have anything stored outside of the house that might be of value, lawnmowers, bicycles, mopeds, surfboards, those kind of things, please get them out of sight from the main street. If you're able to install a motion-sensitive lighting system and/or security system. And keep a detailed inventory of any valuables that you may have in your in your home. And then while you're at home, don't open your door to strangers. Again, keep all doors, windows secured as best as possible. If anyone calls you over the phone, there's a lot of phone scams on right now and scams via the Internet. So please be careful of those things. Double-check the source and don't give out any of your personal information. And if your home, if you do find that your home is broken into, please call the police as soon as possible so we can make sure that their that your home is so safe and that there there are no suspects remaining in the house. And then we'll be able to conduct our investigation for you and generate a report for you. But that's our report for the month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for the HPD from the board members? Anyone? Okay, not seeing any questions. Any other questions for HPD in the community? All right, not seeing anyone. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, so going on to the Board of Water Supply. Lorna, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, my my video is not working very well, but let me just share my announcement that I have for this month. Okay, so let's see. We just want to talk about World Water Day, so Board of Water Supply and participating city agencies. They're observing World Water Day on March twenty-second. This year, the theme is water for peace. So this internationally organized event encourages water use across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use, consume, and manage water in our lives. So during this observance, just wanna maybe during this time, read inspirational stories and watch videos on the global water and climate crisis. Find out how climate change impacts our water and get conservation tips at our website, W W W dot Board of Water Supply dot com and also through our social media channels. That's what I have for this month. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Lorna. Questions for the Board of Water Supply from the board? Okay, not seeing any any questions from the community, Board of Water Supply? All right. If not, thank you very much, Lorna.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, so let me circle back to the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Fire Department on? Okay, all right, so not seeing any. We'll defer that till next month. All right, moving on to public input. It's an opportunity for the community to provide public input to the board. Again, we're not going to be able to take any action on any input, but glad to hear and consider any input from the community. Does anybody have any public input for the board? Online or in person? All right, not seeing any. We're gonna move on to community updates. The first item under community updates is the Department of Transportation Services. We're fortunate to have Kelly Akasaki, DTS Traffic Engineer with us this evening to provide us updates on, I guess, pending risers with the DTS at this point and other DTS issues, I guess, affecting the Kamaki community. So so Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
Evening Chair, Neighborhood Board Members, Community Members, Elected Officials. As mentioned, my name is Kelly Akasaki. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services, Transportation Engineering Division Chief. Adam from Councilmember Waters' office asked if I could come and attend and kind of give you an update on how we handle risers that come, especially from Neighborhood Board or community members or from councilmember himself. We do have a lot of speeding issues that come in lately. Everyone wants speed humps on their streets. The state has been helping us put in a lot of speed humps islandwide. I'm sure you've noticed they have been putting on their streets everywhere around the island, all the way around to North Shore. What we are doing is we are asking them where we know speeding is a problem and especially around school areas, we have asked them to help us install speed humps or race crosswalks. So the first one they put in for us in the town area is on Kapilani Boulevard after the Sarayara Incident. Just recently, they installed four more on Pensacola, also in front of McKinley High School. We've put in in Eva, Wynai, Kailua, Salt Lake. But it takes us a while to do the evaluations first. So what we we have a list already of speeding issues around schools where we know speeding is evident. So we take speed counts, we take volume counts, we take data. And that's the hardest part is when we respond to any kind of requests for speeding. We only have one survey crew in our planning department and they take the surveys for the whole island. They usually are a three-man crew. Recently, they were a two-man crew. And as of last week, they are down to one employee. So it takes three people to go out, you know, they do, they stop traffic, they lay down meters, they come back, they pick up meters, or they put up videos sometimes. Sometimes we request videos so we can see twenty-four hour what the the data looks like or what the traffic looks like. Right now, their crew is down to only one. The other issue that we have with the survey crew is that we don't take any counts like now during spring break. We don't take counts in the summer. So once May comes, U H is out of school, we don't take counts. We do it again in September when colleges and all the schools are back in session. We take a break from Thanksgiving to right after New Year's as well. So there's a limited time on when we can do these counts. And again, it's one crew that does counts for every single street islandwide. So that that's the hard part for us is because it takes us so long, maybe two to three months for us to get actual data coming back. Right now, we have in your area, Waiala, we went out with councilmember and the residents there to talk about Waiala speeding further into the valley. We have Tenth Avenue, we have Sixteenth Avenue speeding concerns. And of course, we have Harding Avenue between Fifth and First Avenue. So that's the process that we go through. I wasn't sure if there's any questions specifically from the Neighborhood Board, but that's kind of the process that we look at when we address some of the concerns that come in from from your board.
All right. Thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate it. Questions from the Neighborhood Board first. Hang on. Questions from the board members? Jason, go ahead.
I have two questions for you this evening. Thank you for attending.
Hello? Sorry about that. Thank you for attending this evening and making yourself available. I have two questions for you. First one is, can you please confirm my understanding and kind of clarify for the participants this evening? Do you need to have engagement with any kind of federal agency or at least federal regulations in terms of making modifications to signalization or street layouts?
Okay, so traffic signals is handled by a different division. That's our Traffic Technology and Signals Division. What we do is we warrant the traffic signals for them. They handle all the signals, all the cameras islandwide, including the state ones. So they have to meet certain federal requirements because they get hundred percent funding from federal. Whereas if I were to do a project, the most I could get is a eighty percent federal, twenty percent local match. But for them, if they meet all the the federal standards, the M E T C D warrants, they will get a hundred percent federal funding, which is why they try to meet those standards. As for street lighting, they also follow federal standards. That's actually under Mechanical and Engineering Division, but we work closely with them as well. And I believe for them, their standards have also increased, especially by crosswalks, requiring higher brighter foot, it's called foot candles, footlight candles. They're requiring a higher amount, especially near crosswalks. Is that the kind of question? I'm sorry. Is that the question that you that I answer your question?
It does, yes. And it gets to the point that I wanted to convey to the audience this evening is that any modifications within the public realm relating to streets involve multiple agencies and multiple layers of jurisdiction and code requirements. And so I just wanted to make that clear to everyone that what seems like a simple request can take some time to work through those different entities and layers. And so my my second question.
Even within the city, it's different agencies. So if I wanted to put a project out to bid, you know, I'm working with B F S and they're purchasing, I'm working with their fiscal to help us with the money. If we're doing a federal aid project, it goes through state highways first and them to approve it all. Then it goes to federal highways for them to approve it as well. So yes, the process does take time because it goes through so many approvals.
Excellent. Thank you. My second question also perhaps relates to multiple agencies being involved. But you were speaking earlier about adding speed bumps, which I think you may agree are or are not as effective as people might wish. What agency, if it's you or someone else, is responsible for other traffic calming measures such as road narrowing or producing bulbouts from sidewalks to reduce pedestrian cross distances? Because those measures can also reduce speeds along the roadways. And so I'm just curious if those are being considered in addition to just putting in speed bumps, maybe even coinciding with repaving efforts and so forth.
Of course. So that is my department, Traffic Engineering Division. We look at various tools in our toolbox. We look at bulbouts, we look at roundabouts, we look at speed tables, medians. A lot of it's where we already have the space to put them in. So so say we take Harding Avenue. Unfortunately, it's only a two-lane roadway. Not much shoulder, not much space to put a median, not much space to put in any bulbouts. But where we have like Waiala Avenue, where we have parking lanes, where we do have the bulbouts up by Waiala on top of the hill. It all depends on space, but we do look at all of that. So we have various roundabout projects. We have one big one out in Kailua, right in front of the Koppa Y Market. We have two that we just put in Kunea. And now with every new development, we are requiring them to put it in when they are building new subdivisions. So if you go out to Hoopili or to Kapale, you'll see roundabouts and medians and bulbouts there as well. The hard part is we can't get HPD out all the time to help us with the speeding. So we have to come out and put in all these measures. We can put in temporary quick build ones like on Macully. We have a little mini circle with just plastic tubes and curbs. And then it's a trial. And if we have enough money, we can come back and hardscape that whole thing with concrete. So so yeah, we're looking at all of that.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. All right, Becky, you have your hand up?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me? I'm using headphones. So great. Okay. Thank you, Kelly, for coming. That was really informative. I I'd be remiss, I've been on the Neighborhood Board since two thousand and seventeen, I'd be remiss if I didn't actually say that I have seen many, multiple times complaints about Sixteenth Avenue speeding on Sixteenth Avenue. And I even talked to a man who lost his dog who couldn't make it across the street fast enough. With speeding car coming down that slope. And then that intersection is really tricky in so many ways, like there's the bus stops and then there's pedestrians and we're right next to H one and especially in the morning traffic. And if there's only two lanes and you got to get in the right lane, so I don't know how that can be remedied. I know I think that the congestion just outpaces the design. But yeah, it's just a really tricky intersection. So I just want to make sure that's aired out.
So Sixteenth Avenue, we have speeding concerns coming down the hill, as you said. Claudine is kind of where it's kind of funky. It's that five intersection with that little park on the corner. We do have there, we don't have quite enough to fit like a mini circle, but we do have some room there to kind of maybe slow them down. There is one crosswalk there. I do have to go back and have our guys check the slope and see how steep it is. Because we don't put any speed humps or any vertical traffic calming measures if the roadway grade is over eight percent. Think we're in that area because it comes right around that hairpin turn.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then to Waiala, it's so narrow. We don't have much space to do anything else like curbs or bulbouts. And then for Sixteen, Waiala, our traffic signal guys are actually trying to get a design consultant out there to put in left turn pockets. So it'll be specific left turn pockets and they will have a specific protected only left turn arrow, which should help with a lot of the accidents in the area.
Yeah, I think when people get used to that pattern, then it'll be a lot better. One other spot I want to mention, which maybe has come your way, is heading on Waiala towards town and it's where Kamaki Auto is, is it Ninth Avenue? So like, I've noticed it, like for all of Waiala, maybe there's seventeen lights or something like that. There's a light in the middle of the road hanging from one of the overhead things. And so your eye will just fixate on the line of light, but except at maybe two intersections all along Waiala, the lights are on the side.
So Eighth Avenue, yeah. Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue. So those do not have overhead lights which come over each lane. And let me just kind of explain the history behind that. On the Maoka side, the historic buildings have awnings. So if you look really closely, the traffic signal is in a little puka in the middle of the awning. So what we're trying to do is we're gonna try and do a project where we build a bulbout where the parking area is, put the traffic signal actually in the roadway so it doesn't affect historical awning. And then we can do an overhead light. So that is in the works. We just have to get funding. Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so glad to hear that. One last comment, I guess. Question comment is, it wasn't lost on me when you said there's only one person who does the traffic studies on the whole island. Right?
Right, right. Not traffic study. So they take our survey. So they take our speed counts, they lay down the meters and take the data. But we have engineers and techs in our department that do the actual studies once the data comes back.
Okay, so like the person in the field with like the tripod thing and all that, you only have one person that does that.
Right now, yes. On a crew of usually three, we only have one.
So you usually would have three. So is this like a H R problem, a workforce problem, a money problem?
It's it's overall, I have three engineers who I can't fill for the last five years. I have positions, I have clerks. They don't want to work for the city. I don't know if it's, we don't pay enough or they don't want to do the type of work that we do, but it's really hard for us lately to try and fill these positions. And we've been moving faster. H R has this forty-five day policy where they were complaining that it takes six months or more. We are on this new speedy forty-five day track and I still can't get any. I've offered to at least engineers in the last year and they've all turned them down. I don't know how to answer that.
Yeah, okay. All right. For the list. Thanks.
But we're not the only department. Every department is struggling.
Right. Yeah, state too. Yeah.
All right. All right. Thanks, Becky. So we're we're kind of over the allotted time for this agenda item. So we can just do one quick question, June. I think you have your question. Okay. Okay. Elwood, are you gonna ask about the bus in Thirteenth Avenue? Elwood, you need to go up to the mic. Yes.
Well, my back hurt. I'd rather sit. So this, I just got an email from Adam Do. And he says about, you folks don't want to make the bus come out the street because the street is only like a one lane. So I'd like to have you and an engineer comes to my place and we look at the street and see if we can widen the street and maybe something else we can do. Because it's not only the bus that uses Thirteenth Avenue. Big trucks, even the garbage truck makes a right turn too. So they have to cross the yellow lines. So let's see if he can improve that. Can you hear me? I'm looking at you and it looked like you're not hearing me.
I can I can hear you. So that is, I did bring it up with our bus group. Adam did send it over to me. It's not only that the roadway is narrow, it's also that there is no light at Thirteenth and Waiala. So the bus needs to make a left turn there. So it's really difficult for a bus to make a left turn where there's no traffic light for them to make a left turn.
No, you got things wrong there. The bus will be coming from town and then make a right turn in from Waiala into Thirteenth Avenue. They're not making a left turn. So they will be coming up all the way to Thirteenth and Harding. And that's why you folks don't like it because the bus have to cross the yellow line because it's only a one, not one-way street, but it's a two-way, but one going east, one going west. So that's that's why I'd like to have you and an engineer. I'd like to meet you folks in person. And I kind of give you my phone number. I don't know all these people in the audience. So maybe you can call Adam and Adam can call me and set up time schedule when I can see you in person and whoever the engineer is.
Sure, sure. I'll get you in from Adam and we can meet you out in the field.
Yeah, Adam, you know what we're talking about. My name is Elwood Lum, but I go by.
I have your name, Mr. Lum. Thank you.
No, please, Elwood. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so unfortunately, we're gonna have to move on. Lucas, I do see your hand up, but unfortunately, we're gonna have to move on. So if you don't mind taking it up directly, perhaps with Adam at this time. So thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate your time in coming out today. Thanks very much. All right, our next update is the Kamaki Business and Professional Association is Calvin on? All right, if that, we'll move on to the Hawaii Bicycling League and our updates from Eric McCutcheon. Eric?
All right. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to session two of our test prep for our micro mobility test coming up. Hope you're all ready. A couple of things to remember. I'm just gonna ask some questions and feel free to just scream out your answers. Maybe mute yourselves at home. Also, I'm gonna use that acronym that I invented, just R C I L, meaning does this device need registration, safety check, insurance, license for the operator, license for the device as we go. Let's start with this, two non-tandem wheels, yeah? Electric, personal, assistive mobility device, one example of them. Commonly known as segways, hoverboards, nine bots, yeah? Some brand names, GoTrax, Razor, Segway, Swagatron. Average speed out of the box? About twelve and a half miles an hour. Helmet required? No. Can R C I L, registration, safety, anything required? No, nothing. Where are they allowed to go? Not anywhere. It's in the law. They can be on the sidewalk. Okay, it is in the law. They can be on the sidewalk. Maximum speed of? Eight miles per hour. All right, next. All right, legal name, electric foot scooter, more commonly called? Lime scooter or by other brand names, yeah? Nius, Kestrels, Unagis, Ryans, GoTrax, segways also. Around how fast out of the box? About twenty miles an hour. Very good. Helmets required by law? Yes, to age sixteen. Okay, only to age sixteen. R C I L, any of that required? Yes, new law, they are required to be registered, a one thirty-dollar lifetime registration. So some of that money's going to the bike fund and then street improvements and all. Where are they legally allowed to go? By state law, anywhere regulated by the counties. Are there any regulations for Honolulu? No. So, oh, well, they go everywhere, right? Next. Yay, bicycles, e-bikes, terrors, punk kid, devices, lots of different names out there, right? All the big brands have them. Schwinn and Trek Specialize, but also there's Avintons and Rad Power Super Seventy-Three's, lots of them on the road there. Generally, or not generally, by law, top speed? Twenty miles per hour. Top speed, twenty miles per hour. Helmets required? Yes, to age? Sixteen, that's it. R C I L? Yes, only only registration, only registration. Get a lifetime for a bicycle fifteen, for an e-bike thirty. Where can they go? Bike lanes, okay, right side of the road, bike lanes. But remember that they can go the speed of traffic if they can keep up with the speed of traffic anywhere in the lane. So think about that. One more for tonight. All righty, these guys are mopeds, commonly known as mopeds, yeah? Some brand names, famous names. Vespa, Pronto, Honda, Piaggio, Suzuki's got them, Yamaha's got them. By law, top speed? Believe it or not, nope, thirty, only thirty. Okay, any faster than they are, something else, but up to thirty. Helmets required? Yes, to age eighteen, age eighteen. All right. R C I L required? Yes, except for insurance. So interesting. The reason was legislature said they would like this device to be the Volkswagen of Hawaii's roads, right? The common affordable way of getting around and getting people out of one person, one car going one or two miles, three or four miles. Interestingly enough, House Bill two one one two currently continuing to stay alive is well-supported by your representatives here in this room or online. In my opinion, that's a bad bill. And I'm gonna be on vacation. The test is gonna be delayed till I come back. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric. We can't wait. We can't wait for the test, so hopefully I'll be back. All right, we'll see you in June. Thanks very much. All right, our next update is Kapilani Community College is Caroline by any chance? Okay, so not seeing Carol. So we will move on to envision Kamaki, the Treewell Project. And we're glad to have June Look with us this evening, June.
Oh, thank you. Um, I am June Look and I am one of three coordinators for the Kamaki I am June Look, and I am one of three coordinators for the Kamaki Treewell Project. Kathleen Sato is here with me, and we also have Lotnow. So just a little bit of background for the Kamaki Treewells. We take care of 20 trees between Sierra Drive and Coco Head Avenue. It's Tulipwood and White Tacoma. And we work under the auspices of Envision Kamaki and with the City and County Department of Facilities Maintenance. So within the program of, within the Department of Facilities Maintenance is a program called Malama Okaaina. And that program, we call MOKA, is what we are working under. We have an agreement with the city. We are on the third year of an agreement and we have one more year to go. The purpose of our Treewell Project is to beautify Kamaki as well as to support the City and County and the state's plan to increase the urban canopy, just making our lives in Hawaii cooler and more climate resistant. So our project started three years ago. The tree wells, those 20 tree wells, there was inconsistent water, dying plants, and lots and lots of litter. So Envision Kamaki wanted to solve that problem and we made the agreement with the city. So today, we have a really nice cadre of volunteers, and I wanted to give a shout out to all the businesses involved. AA Nails, Nana Ikatsu, 16 Magazine as well, Kahala Sunrise Rotary, Calvin Higa's not here, he is in charge of that one. And that's the really beautiful one in the center with the yellow mary gold and the purple heather. That's his and the rotaries. Kusasa Foundation helps out and Queen Theater. I saw Dory's name here. Thank you, Dory. And then we also have individuals who take care of plots too, also. We have about maybe only a 10% vacancy of plot ownership. So we're really, really happy about that. Looking into the future, we want to see if we will get another agreement with MOKA at the expiration of 2025. We're creating a newsletter that will tie our volunteers together and also use it as a promotion piece. And we will expand the Treewell Program if we continue to grow our volunteer base. So basically, that's the update of a very successful Kamaki project. Thank you. From Sierra Drive to Coco Head Avenue, 20 trees.
All right. Thank you very much, June. Appreciate the update. Thanks very much. Great project. All right, so we will move on to our presentation section of the agenda. And we have a presentation from Honolulu Civil Beat on a low-power FM radio license. Is Matthew Leonard here? Hey, Matthew. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Matthew Leonard, I'm one of the editors at Civil Beat down at the Civil Beat Plaza, Goodwill Building. Thanks for giving me a couple of minutes to just give you a little bit of an update on something that Civil Beat's starting a conversation with. So this is just the beginning of a community conversation that we want to undertake. We applied for successfully a community radio license from the FCC in December. The reason we did this is they come up very, very rarely. There's very narrow windows of opportunity to actually do this. So we took the opportunity to apply. We have successfully got a license. We now have three years potentially to turn the key on a low-power FM license. So low power means that it's 100 watts. It runs off a wall socket. It's not a three-phase operation. The antenna looks like a TV antenna would be on the top of Goodwill Plaza there. And it would also have an emergency transmission system for disasters, hurricanes, that kind of thing. And it would have a footprint, terrestrial footprint of about five to seven miles. So the thing that we're hoping is that we, the reason we wanted to at least have the option to explore this and to hear feedback from the community is we felt it would be an additional service on top of the great work obviously that HPR does, shout out to HPR. But there is diversity in the community that we think would benefit from having a more open access community format that Civil Beat can kind of support and kind of help grow and develop over the next, the next couple of years. So because I know you've got a very full agenda, I've left my business cards there on the bench. If anyone wants to have a longer conversation, please reach out. My email's there. Ring me. We'll have sit-down talk story about it. I can go into more detail. And I think I have maybe two minutes to answer questions if anyone wants to try their luck with a question now.
Wait, hang on, hang on. Mr. Lum, we've got a couple of board members here with questions. Becky, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Um, oh, I got so dark. When you said open access, is this gonna be something like an Olelo for radio where community members could book a time and create their own show?
No, I don't think book a time. It's not book a time. So there's a very specific requirement for these low-power FM licenses. There has to be 36 hours of local programming per week. And so there's kind of some restrictions on what kind of, what kind of programming it would need to be. However, the purpose of engaging with the neighborhood board and all the people who are participating in the neighborhood board process is that, you know, the, there are various entities, including the bicycling league or community organizations like the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who we've also been talking to, who may have programming ideas that they want to come to us with. And then we can say, okay, how do we deliver that? How do we support that? Is that something we can include on a regular basis in the schedule? So it's not like a booking the time thing. It'd be something that is, is the biggest challenge talking to other community radio stations is about building out a realistic schedule that is sustainable over time. And it's gonna take us like at least a year to have the outreach, to have conversations and see whether we're gonna be in a position to actually move forward with, with launching the station. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Kelsey, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My question also was pertaining to the Open Access Community Program. I was trying to envision what that is. And your response just clarified a bit what that is. So if 36 hours has to be local programmed, do you intend to also air national programming?
We would be, we would be looking really closely to make sure we're not duplicating what HPR does, the great work that HPR does. But there is a lot of other programming out there, including international programming from international broadcasters that could also be used as overnight programming, say. But that, the primary purpose is to elevate local voices. And so it's primarily there as a platform for spoken word. And it would be something that we're kind of, you know, working with, working with groups who are already potentially creating content or who have the ability, you know, like neighborhood boards or like, you know, people involved in the legislature to, to do, you know, roundtable discussions that are of interest to the community locally. So that, that's kind of how we're starting to think about it. But part of it is getting your input, getting community input and having these longer conversations. Yep. So we're open, we're open to what people think would be most useful to the community.
Okay, thanks, Kelsey. All right. One last question. Edward, go ahead.
No, no, no. I'm just saying it's a low, because it's low power, it's, it's a very low, it's a very low technology threshold. It runs essentially off a computer, off a box in a room with a TV antenna. So it's not, there's nothing about a power line. It's got to do with wanting to have a backup power system for the station so it can stay on air if there's another hurricane or an leak, right? So that's, that's what it's about. Yeah, it's, it's gotta be 24, it has to stay on air 24 hours, but it has to have the featured local programming is gonna be at times when people are gonna be most available to listen to. It's local programming. There's a section that has to be local programming, and then there's other stuff that can be not local programming. No, well, that's an example, sure. Yeah, yeah. But there's also content that Civil Beat would also produce. So for example, audio versions of our stories. We have a lot of back catalog in, in podcasting. All of that kind of stuff becomes content as well. No commercials, no. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Matthew.
And please reach out if you, if you want to talk more.
Thanks very much. Thank you very much. All right, so we are gonna move on to the resolutions portion of our agenda. We have one resolution to consider this evening, an update discussion and proposed resolution concerning draft general reevaluation report with integrated supplemental environmental impact statement for the Alawai flood risk management project. And this is being proposed by Dave Watase, which I see is online. So Dave, I will turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Kang and the Kamaki Neighborhood Board members. My name is Dave Watase. I've been following the Alawai flood mitigation project since 2015. I've attended almost every related meeting held by the Army Corps. I submitted my written testimony, which goes into further detail of the Army Corps' project published on Thanksgiving Day 2023. It also has links to the full 3,741-page draft supplemental EIS and links to the project's website, which has the PowerPoint and video of all the public engagement meetings. Your neighborhood board previously passed two resolutions pertaining to previous project plans. I see many new faces on the board, and you may not know of my involvement, which began in 2015. Because the Army Corps included several upstream detention basins on private properties without engaging the property owners and/or the neighboring communities. The current project is based on a reevaluation study jointly funded by the Army Corps and the city. The project costs $1.075 billion, and the benefit is $905 million and includes flood walls near Woodlawn Bridge in Manoa, flood walls along Koali Road near the Old Wailei Road, and flood walls around the Alawai Canal and flood walls in Burms around the Alawai Golf Course for detention storage. The project is designed to mitigate the 50-year flood, whereas the previous designs were for the 100-year flood. The greatest concern not addressed with the Army Corps' plan is that the Alawai Canal is open to the ocean and subject to high tides, tide surges, and sea level rise, all of which can impact the effectiveness of flood walls. As an example, a downgraded hurricane with a four-foot tide surge combined with a high tide will negate any benefits of a six-foot flood wall. Common sense tells us floodwaters will not flow out of the Alawai Canal until the elevation of the canal is higher than the ocean. The downside to above-ground floodwalls are that they require all of our interior storm drainage to be capped off and shut for several hours and without pumps, detention space, or bypasses will induce flooding in the lower watershed Maoko of the Alawai Canal to Muilili, Makali, Almoanai, Makiki. The Army Corps incorrectly assumes that all private landowners will go along with their non-structural flood mitigation measures caused by induced flooding when in fact, no one will participate. Without private, without the private landowner's participation, the alternative is private land acquisition at a cost as high as $5.47 billion. And this is in the draft supplemental EIS. This obligation and cost will fall upon the non-federal sponsor, which is the city. We believe there are better, more economically feasible solutions that are not title influence that the community can support. They include underground tunnels that capture floodwaters at higher elevations in Manoa, Palolo, and Makiki that bypass the Alawai Canal and go straight to the Alawai Harbor to handle the upper watershed. The concept is simple and ingenious and uses head pressure to push floodwaters to the ocean at high velocities. A floodgate and lock system at the Alamana Boulevard Bridge and a flood pump on the Alawai Golf Course network with a series of tunnels to bypass the Alawai Canal to handle the lower watershed floodwaters. These alternative concepts were validated by the Army Corps' own peer engineering review process in the 2017 final EIS and by Oceanet, the city council hired, hired consultant that developed the use of a SWIFT plan incorporating underground tunnels. I'm gonna share my screen now. What am I doing? Okay, so this right here is the flood modeling for the 50-year flood. And on the left is without project conditions, and on the right is with project conditions. And I just wanna point up, oops, excuse me, I just wanna point out some obvious things in their modeling. Okay, so if you look on the, on the model, you know, with project conditions, you'll notice that only primarily Waikiki and UH Manoa are the primary beneficiaries of this project. Although Kapahulu is shown as no flooding, they do not explain what will happen when you shut off the interior drainage. And there's some very major culverts that at the end of the canal, one is 20 feet, 20 feet wide, that they don't explain how they're gonna handle it. Kamaki, also, if you look by Iolani School and Alawai Elementary School on the flood map on the right with their project, you'll notice that, you know, those schools do flood as well as a lot of areas in Muilili, Makali, and, and Makiki and, you know, Alamana area. Their plan with six-foot-high flood walls would require some major bridges to be shut down. And there are the, you know, the Kalakaua Bridge, you know, the Makali Street Bridge, the Date Street Bridge, Kapulani Bridge near Kamaki High School and the Koali Road Bridge. All these black X's on this map will require the bridges to be shut down from vehicle and pedestrian use for, you know, up to six hours according to their, their plan. Their plan includes flood walls, and they have different type of walls. They have J-walls. They have I-tieback walls, which actually have, have cable ties that go under people's property to hold up the wall. And they have L-walls over here. And you can see here, they have a flood wall up in Manoa near the Woodlawn Bridge, Koali subdivision over here, and completely around Kamaki High School's athletic field. They've incorporated and they'd even, you know, talked to Kamaki High School. The flood walls are massive. They have 40 to 50, depending on the design, 40 to 50-foot-long micro piles. I think the design concept is flawed because the substrate is porous coral. So it's like they're building these piles on, on a sponge and the water can actually infiltrate underneath this. So they have another type of wall, the I-wall, which has sheet piles every inch of the wall, but that cost is substantially more. And I think they're gonna have to resort with the sheet piles instead of this kind of micro piles. But that'll be determined later. So this is a general concept of the wall in Manoa. It's only on one side. Maoko of this wall, the upper side of Manoa is not protected. Same thing here with Koali Road. This actually captures the floodwaters coming from St. Louis Heights into the Koali subdivision and doesn't, doesn't prevent it from draining into Manoa or Palolo Stream over here. The other thing, if you know the Old Wailei Road, is basically the same elevation as the Koali's, Koali Road and with a six-foot-high wall on one side and not having it on the other, the Old Wailei Road and below will flood, in my opinion. and below will flood, in my opinion. In summary, we are not against, you know, flood mitigation. We do not endorse the Army Corps' floodwalls, and instead, we favor a better, more sustainable alternative using tunnels, floodgates, flood pumps, combined with ecosystem restoration and basically keeping our streams clean. To date, five Neighborhood Boards have already unanimously passed similar resolutions, and they are the Diamond Head Kapulu St. Louis Neighborhood Board, Manoa Neighborhood Board, Makali Moolili Neighborhood Board, Makiki Lower Punch Potatless Neighborhood Board, and the Almona Kakaakko Neighborhood Board. An important, be it further resolved clause is the establishment of a community advisory group consisting of all eight Neighborhood Boards within the Alawai watershed. And I will seek to get Waikiki Neighborhood Board to join us on this effort. I would appreciate your taking action on this resolution, and thank you for your service to our community. I'm All-Pal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dave. Any questions for Dave Watase from the board?
Dave, thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit more about where these proposed underground tunnels would be located and how they would be excavated. Thank you.
Well, one of the plans is, you know, called SWIFT. It's a SWIFT tunnel plan by Oceanet. And they have actually tunnel machines. They're the same kind of tunnel machines that they use and has already been used in the islands for our sewer systems. And these tunnel machines, basically, they drop them down, you know, 40, 50 feet underground. They have a starter tunnel, and they basically bore, it's like an earthworm or something, it bores the hole. And behind it, they follow with the concrete pipe piping system. And they have different types. Some, they push it through, and they have others that if the tunnel's really big, they, you know, they use it for subways, you know, freeways even. They have these massive ones that they've done throughout the world, and, you know, they're hundreds of feet in diameter. They have these huge, huge machines that they do it. We wouldn't need one that big. The current plan calls for a 12-foot diameter tunnel, one going up, you know, into Manoa. And the reason for that is to capture it at a higher elevation, possibly about 100 to 150 feet above sea level, and completely bypass the Alawai Canal. So the canal can still function, and because we're capturing the water at a higher elevation, it doesn't matter if there's a tide surge or sea level rise or high tide. It's immune to the height of the ocean because we're capturing it at a substantially higher elevation. That's the beauty of it.
Thank you so much. If I may have a follow-up question. Will these tunnels require pumps in order to push the water out? I'm assuming because we're on a fairly shallow coastal shelf, I don't know that they could gravity flow downhill.
Yeah. The tunnels that go up into the, you know, the Palolo, Makiki, and Manoa Tunnel will be using gravity flow. Now, if, for instance, the upper watershed, the water basically drains out, we can still use those tunnels, you know, with pumps and to help drain the lower watershed. So I think the comprehensive plan, and they can be independently built, depending on available funds, would be first to build the tunnels in the upper watershed and then build a floodgate, flood pump, and network these tunnels so that we could basically divert the water where needed. And the problem right now is the canal is flat. So when you don't have a slope, you just don't get the velocity. The velocity of the canal is, you know, from what I read, is one foot per second, right? So you go one foot per second times 200 feet wide. You know, if you can move that water at 20 feet per second, it's the same thing as a 10-foot-wide channel, you know, with the water moving a lot faster. So that's why what the studies that Oceanet did with their plan, one or two tunnels, just a little 12-foot diameter tunnel, can move almost as much water as the whole Alawai Canal can move itself right now. You know, so, you know, I think that's the way to go. The impacts are minimal versus building walls around everything. You know, and, you know, for decades now, people have been talking about restoration. We learned our lesson. You look at Palolo Stream, you know, it's half-channelized. You know, people don't want the concrete in their streams anymore, right? So a wall is basically a concrete channel. And, you know, from my observations and even the research going back to 1997, there's no testimony coming from the public that says we want more concrete walls or we want more channelization. A lot of it, I would say 95% of it, is ecosystem restoration, you know, and keeping our streams clean. And I'm more of an, my background's engineering, so I'm looking for more of an engineering solution. I'm looking more for handling the bigger storms, you know, the ones that are, it can be the 25, the 50, the 100-year storm. Ecosystem restoration primarily targets the more frequent storms. You know, once the ground gets saturated, you know, a lot of these measures get, you still get the runoff. So we still need something that will work, and it's either concrete walls or it's things like what Oceanet came up with would be tunnels, or we utilize pumps in the right location, you know, to give us that protection that we all want. And the other thing is that I think a comprehensive plan would include not just protecting Waikiki and University of Hawaii. A comprehensive plan would protect everybody. And I think that's what the community wants. You know, we want everybody to buy in and support the project, but we need somebody to go to the Army Corps. And we're hoping our congressional leadership, when we get everyone's support, will basically tell the Army Corps to take a second look at what the community's been begging them for, and they've just ignored us. So we'll see what happens.
All right, Becky, you have a question?
Hi, thank you, Dave. Nice to see you. Thanks for
Becky.
being a watchdog on this over all the years. I'm kind of shocked to, you know, read some of the stuff in the reso that you've sent to us. I agree that more walls probably isn't the answer, but I'll leave the design and the engineering to like you and Jason. But I think, I lived in Japan for a couple of years, and they did a lot of the concrete stuff along all these rivers, I think for flood mitigation, and it was really ugly. So if we could stop it, I think it would be a good thing. What catches my eye in your reso are paragraphs five, six, and seven. So I just wanted to kind of amplify that concern that you get to, which is we passed like 18, 16 resos, all the Neighborhood Boards, about how they didn't engage with the community well enough. Then they did. I mean, it's sort of meshing with Red Hill, like, I'm not sure, like, which entity, what it was. They seemed to backtrack and come talk to us and change some of their plans. Is that my recollection? Is that right? You know, they started to talk to us again. But then they went back into the dark of night and then have this plan during the holidays and that period for us to review is when no one's paying attention. And now they're kind of ramming us through.
Yeah, so I think when we, you know, we kind of like stalled the first project, and we actually legitimately, you know, brought to their attention a lot of flaws and including their modeling. So they redid it, and their updated modeling proved that their plan didn't work. So they did what they call EDR, Engineering Documentation Report, and they completely changed the design. And they went with a plan instead of detention, one of conveyance. And they ended up putting a 4,000 CFS pump and a floodgate in the middle of the canal by the Manoa Stream Confluence, which also didn't work, you know. You know, and we pointed that out. And they also added things like a bypass underneath the Alawai Promenade, you know, by the convention center. So there was a lot of resistance to their second plan, which was done when COVID hit. So it came as a big surprise to us because nobody in the community, and Jeff Herzog, Cindy Akpal, they came out. They were actually going to all the Neighborhood Boards. They probably visited everybody once or twice. They met with small groups, the farmers, the Manoa businesses, you know, the, you know, the pavelers. You know, they met with all these groups, and we were really excited about it.
Heard a lot, yeah.
They went through nine closed doors, and they came out with a completely different design. They did the same thing here. They went through the motions. We had probably 16 meetings, you know, and the community was all excited. We had hundreds of people participating throughout all these meetings. And everything the community said, they basically crossed off the list. They found a way to, you know, to cross it off, and they ended up with the walls again. So, you know, that was perplexing to us, and because of that, in a way, we feel it was all a waste of time. And we told them, if they look at what we're suggesting, we'll support them, you know, and we'll be behind their plan, but they went the other way again. So that's what this resolution is about, and we're hoping that they'll take a second look at it. And if they do, then I think they'll have everyone's support.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I support your reso.
Mahalo.
All right. Thanks very much, Dave, for that background. We're going to have to move on to consideration of the resolution. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review it. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution entitled Resolution Concerning the Draft General Revaluation Report with Integrated Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement for the Alawai Flood Risk Management Project?
I so moved to adopt the aforementioned resolution. That is too long for me to recite.
All right. Thank you, Jason. It's been moved. Is there a second?
My second. This is Paul Lenny, or Judy.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is it Kelsey?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right. Second in. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason, go ahead.
As I read the reso, it looks like it has a different Neighborhood Board listed, so I would amend it to correct that to our Neighborhood Board.
I believe the PDF version of the resolution does have the correct Neighborhood Board number, number four. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, let's move to a vote. Okay, shall we do a voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, one abstention. Okay, so the motion carries. All right. Thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate it.
Mahalo. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so we will move on to the elected officials' reports. First up is Mayor Blangiardi's representative, Mark Wong. Mark, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm going to start with the highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which you can find on oneowahu.org. There's a schedule of town hall meetings. The mayor's starting the town hall meetings again. And I only saw a couple on this side of the island. So on Thursday, April 18th, at Keelikikulani Middle School, so what we used to call Central Intermediate. That's, yeah, April 18th, that's downtown on Queenama. And then on May 23rd, there will be one at the Kukohed District Park Gymnasium, and both of those are at 6:30 PM. So that will be your only chance in the near future to go to attend one of these town hall meetings. I think there were about 12 of them. 11, I'm sorry, 11. In the newsletters also mentioned that the administration met with Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg. The city council adopted a first climate adaptation strategy, and Mayor commemorated Black History Month in Honolulu. I have five issues that I want to address from previous meetings. The first question was about a potential presentation by the Department of Emergency Management, and they have been in contact with Chair Kang to schedule this presentation at this board meeting. The next one is a follow-up to the DPR fire assessment that has been asked about for several months now. And they respond that they have worked with HFD to prioritize the park facilities with overgrown brush. Currently, DPR is continuing to gather data on all park facilities which pose a potential fire risk to determine what type of actions need to be taken and the resources required. The next item is about trash pickup concerns and a potential suspension after water main break. ENV responds that when a road closure occurs due to a water main break, which prevents the collection of trash, they will go back the next day or the day after and continue service for that week as long as the roads are reopened. If you have questions about trash collection, you can call 808-768-5990. And after this, I will post all these phone numbers for you. The next question is also for ENV about the bulk pickup policy to ask whether it's actually working because there have been piles of refuse observed in many areas. ENV responded that you can place your trash outside no earlier than the evening before the scheduled collection. They do reply that the bulky item appointment system is working effectively and appointments are available for residents online or by calling 768-3200. And if you do notice trash for more than 24 hours, you can report to refuse inspectors at 808-768-5220. Again, I'll post all these numbers in the chat area. The final issue response from ENV again. The question was about visibility at the Middle Street Transfer Station. It was poorly lit and needed to be restriped. So ENV responded that lighting is being upgraded to LED bulbs to provide better lighting, and restriping will be done within a month. Supply is already purchased for the restriping. New lighting is planned in the upcoming building renovation that is scheduled to begin in 2025. And that concludes my report. Are there any new questions or questions about the report itself?
All right. Thank you very much, Mark. Any questions for Mark Wong, the mayor's representative from the board? Seeing none, questions from the community. Go ahead, just one.
Thanks for looking into the dump area. I posed that question to you back in January. So thanks for looking up because it was dark in there and the yellow lines, the bay, we call it. It's very dark too. Not dark, it was kind of erased. Anyway, thanks for looking into it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Okay, any other questions for the mayor's representative? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
All right, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Tommy Waters, Chair Waters. All right, so we're gonna move on to Councilmember Tommy Waters, Chair Waters. Welcome.
Hello, Chair, members, uh, members of the public. Happy to see you folks all here tonight. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. I do have my newsletter there in case you folks don't have it, but we did email it to you all. Number one, the city council is considering Resolution twenty-four dash five zero, amending the city charter to create an ocean safety department and an ocean safety commission, similar to the fire commission and/or the police commission. Lifeguards have been very vocal about, about the issues that they have. And they feel that the department, standalone department, aside from EMS, the ambulance, would better serve the public. So what this resolution does is it would put it on the ballot for you folks to decide. At the mayor's State of the City address, he did say that he has, and he does have the power to create that on his own. Um, so what I'm thinking of doing is perhaps amending the resolution or introducing a new resolution, asking the public whether or not we should have a commission. Yeah, a commission. So if this goes on the ballot, just be aware that you folks get to decide whether or not we should do that. Second thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, the flood mitigation project. You folks just passed the resolution and I completely agree with you folks. Um, I think it was the right thing to do. I attended the Alawai Flood Mitigation Meeting at Mission Memorial recently, where the Army Corps of Engineers came and presented. And, and they basically wanted to hear from the community. But my feeling was that they really didn't take to heart what the community had to say. And one of the things that's probably most egregious is the six-foot walls that are gonna go around the Alawai. Right, six feet walls, it's just gonna be a home for graffiti. We already have a huge graffiti problem, right? The canoe paddlers aren't gonna be able to paddle canoe anymore because you're not gonna be able to get in and out of the, the canal. But really, we should be looking at, um, community-based ideas, which is exactly what Dave Watase is talking about. So thank you, Dave, for, for that. I completely support you. You know, I, next thing I want to talk about is monster homes. You know, I've been fighting against monster homes since being elected. And I introduced Bill Six. One of the things that Bill Six does is requires these folks who get a stop work order, who post the stop work order on the property. I don't know if you guys remember this, on the Sierra Drive property, um, they got a stop work order, but didn't stop working. And if Kelsey's still on there, she and I were out there and I was on the phone with the mayor saying, mayor, we gotta do something. And thank you to the mayor because he got it done, but there was a crew out there working, um, you know, handling a fist to, to get as much done before that stop work order was actually enforced. But if it's out there for everyone to see, I think it's a good thing. also, folks, remember the Building Board of Appeals made a decision on that, that denial or, or revocation of the permit on the Sierra Drive home. But when they issued their decision, we couldn't tell what it was. So what Resolution twenty-four dash forty-six does, it, uh, requires them to improve the procedures for notifying the public of their decisions. And then I know the board took a position on this last month, but I think it's worthwhile talking about again. And what I'm talking about is Senate Bill thirty-two oh two. The city council is having a hearing on Senate Bill thirty-two oh two. Even though this is a legislative bill, I think it's important for the community to have an opportunity to further weigh in. Basically, what we're saying is we have strong concerns about thirty-two oh two and its House companion bill. And for those of you in the public who don't know what's happening, and those of you online who may or may not be aware of what's going through the legislature right now. Basically, what this bill is trying to do, and I give them credit for trying, to, to solve the affordable housing crisis that we're in, right? T B A, Department of Business and Economic Development, um, did a study in two thousand nineteen and they're updating it currently. But back in two thousand nineteen, they're saying that we have a shortage of twenty-five thousand units, right? Um, it's probably more at this point. But really, the solution that, that they're suggesting, in my mind, would change the face of, of our state and as far as I'm concerned, my district, right? And the island. What it will allow is a minimum lot size of two thousand square feet. So if you have, as an example, uh, seven point five, your, your lot is zone seven point five, you're now gonna be allowed to subdivide that into three lots. Obviously, if you had ten thousand square feet, you could subdivide it into five lots. Yeah, you could sell them off if you want, right? You could build now, so, so let me just read that portion to you because it's, it's, it's right here in the bill. Um, one second.
Chair Waters, as you're looking for that, if I can ask you to just, uh, summarize and conclude.
Sure.
With that.
Well, rather than reading what the bill says, you folks can look it up online yourselves. But once you subdivide two thousand square foot, you now can put three units on there. So just as an example, if you have a seven point five square foot lot, you subdivide it into three, three units. Now, instead of one house on there, which may currently be there, you could put nine. So really, really important. This bill is going through the legislature. If you have an opinion about that, please express it. You have an opportunity to express it to me and the council tomorrow at, at nine A M. If you're interested, or to your legislators. That, that, again, this is super important. And I hope people are way again. I did bring a map to show the urban district where this would apply, which is everywhere. So be aware, because at some point down the line, if the bill passes, I guarantee it's more barren, people are gonna say, Tommy, how did you let this happen? And really, it's the state that's passing this legislation, not the city. Anyway, available for questions.
All right, thank you, Chair Waters. Questions? Looks like Kelsey has a question. Kelsey?
Hi, Chair Waters. Thanks for everything that you do. Um, we did discuss this bill last meeting and we did pass a resolution in opposition. So I'm wondering about, um, your resolution. Why a resolution of strong concerns rather than opposition?
Thank you. Great question. And what I was trying to do is get the legislature to allow us to work with them to amend the bill. Um, just was trying to be more reasonable. I am in opposition, but also I, I need to count the votes on the council as well. And I thought we had a better chance of working with our counterparts in legislature if I worded it strong, strong concerns. The whereas clauses and the be resolves would all be the same and you saw how I wrote it. But that's the reason why.
All right, last question. Becky, go ahead.
Hi, Chair Waters. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Hi, Becky.
I, I have funny audio issues right now. Um, so I, I, I understand your concern with this bill. I just looked it up. I just want to let the audience know that I put it in the chat. If you wanted to pull it up and look at it. I did see that it has a triple referral on the Senate side, so maybe it's dead. So it's not a concern at the Capitol anymore. Um, but, uh, I'll take a look out for that reso you mentioned. And I just wanted to say, I, I think it is important for the locus of control to be as close as possible to the community. And so I, I would see the counties as being in a better position to make those kinds of decisions than the state. Um, so I appreciate your work on that. We, you brought up some issues about, um, D P P. And I had submitted several months ago a complaint to D P P about a place I used to live in. That was, um, I got really sick living there. I didn't think it was habitable. I've never received any kind of response or confirmation that it was received or anything. And this is a complaint that I'd like to cite in, um, in legal documents. If I could have some sort of number or whatnot. So I guess I, I'll just take this opportunity to say that, you know, it sounds like, you know, D P P, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and perhaps, um, refined in operations. But that's one thing is how do we make a complaint and know that something's being done about it? Because it just felt like going into a black hole. I might, I think Adams reached out to me a couple of months ago, so I'm gonna reply. I'm going to resubmit my complaint. Um, then maybe I could ask you to help bird dog that for me. But, um, but it is something that's concerning because, you know, how do we know that anything's being done with any complaints? So that's all. Thank you.
No, great, great. Um, I, I'm happy to help. And we'll put in a riser for you and then bird dog that. But I will tell you, sometimes the departments are slow at getting back to us as well. But we do keep a list of all the risers that we, um, submit. So we can bird dog that for you, no problem. Oh, by the way, the Senate bill actually crossed over to the House.
Oh, sorry.
I'm alive.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at it too fast.
No, no problem, no problem. But yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Waters. Appreciate the updates.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, so we will move on to Councilmember Calvin Se.
Thank you, Chair. Good, good, uh, good evening. And thank you very much for the opportunity to all the board members and residents. In the chat is my report, this is number one. And it's been a very, very busy two weeks already for the council in regards to the addressing of our city and county budget. But more importantly, you know, what the mayor said in the State of the, uh, City uh, event that he had last week, I thought it was very, uh, well-balanced in regards to addressing the houseless, affordable housing, public safety, and medical issues that we have to deal with. But, uh, I'm just happy to hear all of the discussion this evening as far as what Chair Waters has, uh, presented to you folks also. And at this point, there's a lot of issues that we do have, which is individual issues that is in the chat that you guys can take a look at as part of the report. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have at this point in time. And my other staffer right here is Pua, who's listening. And she's, she was with the Neighborhood Commission, but I took her away from the commission and, and now she's working for me. Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions to the board members. And for Dave, keep up the good work in regards to the Alawai watershed project. Yep, it goes back many, many decades already also.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Se. Any questions for Councilmember Se from the board? Any hands? I don't see any. Anybody present? Okay. All right, any questions? If not, thank you very much, Councilmember Se. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next, uh, representative is, uh, Governor Josh Green's representative. Do we have a representative for Governor Green? Okay, if that, we'll move on to State Senator Stanley Chang. So, uh, Senator Chang's, um, staff member needed to leave, but she did provide an update in the chat. Jeffrey, if you don't mind, um, just briefly reading that, so that's in the record.
Okay, so in the chat, uh, legislative update, the Senate passed two hundred and ninety-one bills while the House crossed over approximately two hundred and seventy-five bills. The next big deadline for the Senate Housing Committee is tomorrow, March twenty-first. The, the judiciary has announced their twenty-twenty-four court interpreter workshops offered by the Hawaii State Judiciary Court Interpreter Certification, Certification Program. Interpreters must be at least eighteen years of age, be authorized to work in the United States and possess a Hawaii general excise tax license. The certification program requires all interpreters to pass a written English proficiency exam and basic ethics exam, clear criminal background check and attend a two-day orientation workshop. The deadline to register for this, for this once-a-year orientation is March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Seating at each workshop is, it, each workshop site is limited to register online. Um, for more information about the Court Interpreter Certification Program, contact the Office of Equality and access to the courts by email at O E A C at courts.hawaii.gov or by calling eight zero eight five three nine four eight six zero. And it was also instructed, if there are any questions, to please email, uh, Senator Chang's email at senchang@capitol.hawaii.gov.
All right, thanks very much, Jeffrey. All right, so we'll move on to Senator Lesihara. Is Senator Ihara or his representative on? Okay. All right, if not, we'll move on to State Representative Joxon Sayama. Representative Sayama, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board, members of the public. Uh, just wanted to give you an update since we last met last month. Uh, regarding H B sixteen thirty, uh, I understand, right? The Climate and Neighborhood Board had passed a resolution, uh, the previous meeting to oppose the measure. Um, this is also related to, it's a companion to S B thirty-two oh two, which, uh, Council Chair Waters had just spoken about. Uh, during the meeting, I had indicated I voted with W R, basically with reservations. However, after, the day after, we had a floor vote on the measure, H B sixteen thirty. I did vote no on it, uh, given the concerns that still remain with regards to enforcement uh, by the respective counties. And again, uh, City and County Honolulu's D P P is not, doesn't have the best track record uh, to maintaining and enforcing its current city or zoning ordinances. So, uh, we didn't, I didn't feel it was appropriate that, uh, the legislature create a state mandate on all counties to apply a, uh, measure that would lack, make, uh, zoning codes in each county more lax. So I voted no on that. Um, the Senate built a crossover to the House, which has a triple, uh, single referral. So Housing, Water and Land Committee, Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. So there's a possibility it could still get heard. Um, again, the triple referrals are kind of unusual, but it was fast-tracked through the House like that. So it could still potentially get fast-tracked, especially as housing as, uh, the lead committee. But it's so, you know, definitely keep an eye on that. Are there bills that, uh, to keep an eye out for? Just today, the, my committee on the Consumer Protection and Commerce, we passed out S B thirty-two thirty-four. This is relating to the, uh, Property Stabilization Fund. Uh, I think you've been hearing on the news lately about increasing insurance premiums for condominium properties and really properties all across the state. Um, this is a result of a number of different factors, most of them, um, out of the state's control. Uh, nevertheless, these premiums are gonna go up. Um, and so to ensure that, uh, properties all across the state, especially condominiums, are able to be insured, uh, the state is planning on reactivating the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund. Basically, we are expanding our capacity to be a last resort market for property insurance. Um, hopefully during this time, uh, it'd just be temporary and, uh, the private market will stabilize itself and then we could deactivate the fund again, as we did after Hurricane Iniki. Uh, so that will be a big one to keep a lookout for. Another one that I believe is getting a floor vote tomorrow in the House is S B thirty-three thirty-five, S D two H D one. This is relating to, basically, adult-use cannabis. Uh, I'm sure you've heard from the news already that this bill is the only vehicle that basically tries to set up a regulatory framework in the state of Hawaii for recreational use for, uh, medical marijuana, I'm sorry, adult-use recreational marijuana. Um, so there has been, of course, a number of different opinions and debates on this matter. We received hundreds of testimony, both in opposition and in favor. Uh, so I am admittedly still a little split. I, I really could see it both ways. Um, and right now, I think a lot of it's dependent on the federal side. Um, if the federal government decides to reclassify marijuana as a, from a category one or Schedule one-two, like a Schedule four, three, then that would be a serious concern for the state if we don't have, uh, regulations already in place. But I, I could elaborate more on that, uh, if anyone has questions, um, further. Uh, with that, we are. Uh, with that, we are, yeah, I mean, we we are scheduling a park cleanup in Palau on March thirtieth, Saturday, from nine to eleven thirty. Um, but that's about it for uh, community activities. Uh, with that, I'm open to any questions from the board or the public.
All right, questions for Representative Sayama, Becky? Becky, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so I have been asked and encouraged by multiple organizations to help advocate for paid family leave. And Representative Sayama, you should have an email from me because I had forwarded to you a voicemail I got from Hawaii's um Children Action Network, asking me specifically to reach out to you to ask for a hearing on paid family leave. So I forwarded that to you. I didn't receive any kind of response. Um, but as a mother who had to leave her work because of um sort of inhospitable accommodations to my childcare needs, started my own small businesses, um, I'd have to ask why you um wouldn't put paid family leave on the agenda for CPC?
Let me take a look. This is SB twenty-four seventy-four, and my apologies that we didn't get back to you. Um, I believe we received this, yes, a confirmation on Monday. Uh, yeah, I think we were quite busy with the marijuana uh testimony on Tuesday, but um, I personally.
Two four seven four, let me just put it into the chat. SB two four seven four.
Yeah, I I have personally supported paid family leave. Um, I voted uh for it on the floor. Um, I think there were some concerns who, from the chair uh of CPC that the, the state's finances, well, again, I don't necessarily agree, but there were concerns with the financial aspects of the bill. Um, that being said, the bill did have quite a long runway uh, for the policy to take effect and accumulate capital from payroll. Um, I think it's high time, well, I know Hawaii and the rest of this, the nation, the states and the nation, you know, jump on the paid family leave wagon. It is an important bill for working-class families, but.
Are are you on the paid family leave wagon?
Oh, yeah, no, again, I've supported it in the past. Um, I'll continue to vote for it. I'll.
So we can count on you to put it up for hearing if if the decision is left in your hands?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I hope I could have a kind of a uh power, but um, yes, it, you know.
We can count on your support for paid family leave.
Of course.
Of course, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Representative Sayama? By the board of the community? If not, thank you very much, Representative Sayama. Appreciate the updates.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to State Representative Bertrand Kobayashi. Is Representative Kobayashi on? All right, if not, uh, moving on to Congressman Ed Keys. Is Congressman Keys or is his representative on? Okay, if that, we'll move on to announcements. So I do have one announcement. Um, this is Board Member Jason DeMarco's last meeting with us. Uh, I'm sorry to say, um, he is um moving out of our community and our loss is that community's gain, for sure. Uh, we really appreciate Jason, all of your service and work with us, and we do have a certificate for you as a small token of our appreciation. Just like to read it. Certificate of recognition on behalf of the Neighborhood Commission and the Kamakiki Neighborhood Board Number Four, presented to Jason DeMarco, with sincere gratitude and in recognition of your valued service and contributions to the Kamakiki community as a member of the Kamakiki Neighborhood Board Number Four, as its treasurer, and as chairperson of its planning and zoning committee dated today. Thank you very much, Jason, for your service. All right, thanks again, Jason. Good luck with everything. Um, speech? No? That's good. You got to give a report very shortly, so, um, okay, any other announcements from the board or its members? All right, if not, so we will put Jason back to work for this last portion of the meeting as um he, if you have a report for the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the committee does not have a report at this time. We had been meeting on a alternating month basis, so we had not met prior to this full board's meeting, but I would just leave you with the word of wisdom that uh, we've heard from many of our elected officials that topics of zoning and building directly and greatly affect our community. So I encourage the board to continue to track and be actively involved in these topics. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jason. Again, thank you for your service. Um, we'll move on to the approval of the February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four written summary of video record. Are there any uh corrections to that summary of video record from the board? Okay, if not, I don't, okay. I guess we don't need a motion though, technically, right? Is that correct? Okay, so we'll do a motion. Okay, so move seconded to approve?
I second the motion.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hey, any abstentions? If not, okay, so that motion carries. The minutes or the written summary of video record is approved. All right, reports, members, attendance at other meetings? Are there any reports? Yes.
I attended the uh Neighborhood Board Meeting at Diamond Head, Kapuhulu, St. Louis Heights Board uh, this month, and uh, Dave Watase was uh, made a presentation uh regarding the, I think, about the housing situation. Uh, spoke about the Pohua Ridge as well as the uh, uh, the sub, the the bill that is being discussed here today. And I s- uh, I was in the audience and I I stood up and I uh, spoke about the the housing conundrum that we we have. Um, I also did it at another meeting at the Alamoona Ka'aka'ko Board, and that's seems like the crux of the issue is that, uh, we want our cake and eat it too. I mean, as the uh bumper sticker says, keep the country country. A large part of the population in, on the islands want to keep the country country. And the alternative, uh, the other option to uh for housing is to build in the urban core. And that's what, that's where we find this struggle uh, for zoning and planning, uh, uh, because we are boxed into very narrow parameters. And um, I think the only way to go forward is to either um discuss whether we can build further out or even just have high rises in uh, the second city, which doesn't have high rises, or accept the need to build a a more dense urban core. I think that's the, that's the discussion that needs to be had. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Franklin. Any other reports of attendance at other meeting? Or? All right. If not, the next meeting of our board is on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM, right here at the Kamakiki Library and on WebEx. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Happy spring break.